This Village of Green Hills Council meeting to order. Council meeting for September 28, 2021. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Halter?
Here.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Metz?
Here.
Ms. Asmanagui?
Here.
Ms. Walther?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here. Okay, we have a prayer by Maria Walther.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before our council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all, and everything that we do here tonight will move us to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We have a special request. One of our members of our community passed on Sunday at 9:00 p.m. May Mr. Rick Remen rest in peace, and please, I ask you this, welcome him in your kingdom. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have council minute from previous meetings, the council meeting of August 24, 2021, and the council retreat of September 14, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, there's two corrections need to be made on the agenda, actually. It says council retreat is a work session. We did not have a retreat, it was a work session. And on the last page of the packet of minutes, Walther was spelled with one R and has to be with two Rs.
All right. Any other corrections that minutes stand approved? All right, moving on, we have a public presentation tonight by Mrs. Beth Solberg, Historic Preservation Consultant, presenting a report on the potential local historic district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff. It's a pleasure to be back before you to discuss the subject of designation of a local historic district. And there are copies of my report up here for whoever would like to have one. No, there's one thing that says Solberg on it. Guidelines, mhm. Yeah. Okay. So, the process to consider local historic designation began in 2018. During the winter of 2018 to 2019, a series of six small group meetings were held to cover all the areas in the proposed district. In these meetings, I presented draft design guidelines for the district and a boundary map with the same boundaries as the National Historic Landmark District. And you will see those boundaries on page nine of my report. The map of the boundaries of the National Historic Landmark District are in blue, and they included everything built through 1950, which is when the federal government disposed of the property in Green Hills. Those boundaries included Damon and the inside of Farragut and Ingram Roads, as well as Gambier Circle, which were excluded from the 1988 National Register District because the homes on those streets were built after the 50-year age requirement in 1988. As a result of the meetings, revisions were made to the design guidelines and the proposed boundaries. After hearing concerns and doing additional inspections in the field, the most significant change to the guidelines was to make them more flexible when it came to windows. The original steel windows in the village have mostly been replaced already with one over one sashes, and the original steel windows are not easy to replicate and not energy efficient. So, that represented a compromise. A change in the boundaries was proposed by your village administrator, Yvonne Kovak, to include property north of the municipal building to ensure that alterations and/or new construction on those properties would be compatible with the character of Green Hills. So, the current map that's being proposed is on page 10, and it excludes Damon and Gambier and Ingram and Farragut, most of Farragut, and then reaches up to Sharon Road to include the Baptist Church property, residential property on Sharon, and the VFW Hall. The COVID-19 epidemic did cause a delay in the progress of the local designation, but an online residence survey was carried out by the village to assess public opinion about the proposed local historic district. A detailed spreadsheet of the major questions, a detailed spreadsheet of the survey response is available from the village, and I don't know if you've seen it, but it's extremely thorough, well-done, and very informative. I have provided a summary of that survey here in the report. There were 84 respondents. Seventy-nine of those were homeowners. Every one, except two, had read the draft guidelines. Eighty-nine percent were aware that the guidelines had been revised. To the question of how long they had lived in Green Hills, 61% said they had lived in Green Hills for 21 years or more. There was a significant number who had lived in Green Hills for more than 50 years. Moving on to page two, on a scale of one to five, 73% of respondents rated the importance of the history of Green Hills at a four or five. Regarding their commitment to protecting the historic character of Green Hills, again on a scale of one to five, 77.5% said they were moderately to very committed to protecting the historic character of Green Hills. Concerning support for the designation of a historic district, 55% said yes. Even homeowners outside of the proposed historic district responded to the survey. There were 36 of them, and 64% of them also supported the district. Respondents were asked to mention their priorities for preservation in the village, and everyone cited housing and the shopping center. A few also mentioned the greenbelt, pocket parks, the swimming pool, the school, community building, and street character. The survey allowed respondents to write at length about how they felt about Green Hills and its preservation, and I have selected some of those responses here to include in the report. And I don't intend to go over all of them in this presentation, but I hope you will look them over. Eight responded to the question of code violations and enforcement, and most of them were very concerned that the code violations would be dealt with and that maintenance would be enforced. There were five respondents who were concerned about the cost of rehabilitation under the design guidelines. That is understandable, but I think it can be addressed in the administration of the district. There was one comment about windows. Windows, the original windows are very old and drafty, and there is plenty of flexibility in addressing windows in the design guidelines. There was one comment about whether federal funding could be available for infrastructure in public areas, and I think that is a possibility. There were two comments about the shopping center. Mostly, I think there's a lot of concern that it could be more attractive than it is, but I know that's an ongoing struggle. So, there were three comments about the guidelines, and one commented that they seemed like one shoe size fits all. I think if you read them, you'll see that that's really not the case. There's a lot of flexibility. The question about will the final guidelines be clear and easily available, I think the answer is yes to both. And one person commented that they liked the idea of controlling paint colors for the outside, and that is not typical of local historic districts in this area because paint is temporary, it can change, and it also can become the subject of heated arguments. I mean, it's really a personal thing. So, I did not include any guidelines for paint color. Let's see. There were quite a few excellent comments about why they supported local designation, to keep the historic nature, to sustain the beauty and history of the village. So, I hope you will read those over. And additional comments can be found in the residence survey spreadsheet. To summarize, the question of local historic designation has been studied and discussed for three or more years. A good effort was made to inform and engage residents during that time through public meetings, publications, and web communications. There is a high level of support among homeowners for historic designation. 73% of survey respondents think the history of Green Hills is important. 77.5% are moderately to very committed to protecting the historic character of Green Hills, and 55% support designation of a local historic district. Concerns about the cost and guidelines can be dealt with through technical and financial assistance, the discretion of the planning commission, and the use of Section 1143.07 of the Green Hills Zoning Code concerning economic hardship. And I have listed next steps at the end of the report, to finalize the boundary map, to prepare a designation application in accordance with the zoning code, to consider the expertise of planning commission members and provide training if necessary, consider hiring a qualified preservation consultant. I would recommend that you hire an architect, if possible, to assist the planning commission with reviewing applications, prepare the application for certificate of appropriateness, or it might be possible to add a checkoff to the building permit application, and of course, you'll hold public hearings, update the website accordingly, and explore financial assistance to homeowners. So, I am here to answer any questions that you might have. I hope that you will move ahead with this. I provided the most current version of the guidelines for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes?
One question. If later on we decide to expand to the full blue portion of the map, we would just, what would we have to do to possibly do that later if we decide?
Well, if you decided to use the blue boundary, which corresponds with the National Historic Landmark Designation, then that would include properties built through 1950. It doesn't include the properties north of here. So, that's really...
Maybe it'd be better if I broke it into two parts. One is, do we have the option to do that later if we decide? And is that something you would think that eventually would be considered, or?
Yes, I would hope so. I mean, one way of looking at this is you could do it in a phased fashion. You know, you could start with this and then expand later if it was going well.
Can I ask a question?
Do we want to open it up? Okay, show it.
I was wondering, on the map where you have the purple and you have the blue, and I'm wondering why you decided to do two different areas?
Okay. The purple and the blue, both are boundaries for historic districts that already exist. So, the purple is the National Register Historic District that was listed in 1988. And it was, then it included only the parts of Green Hills that were 50 years old, so they had been built through 1938. Then, when the National Historic Landmark nomination was prepared, it was advised that it should include everything that was built before the federal government sold it, because that was all built under federal ejos, federal ownership. So, it has to do with establishing what's significant for each designation. I can explain the differences, but...
But it would, because it includes much more of Green Hills, as we know, from back in the 30s and 50s?
Yes.
Up to 88?
Yes, 1938, yeah.
And 38. But you're talking about some of these houses coming in after 1988?
Well, no, through 1950. Because the National Register criteria require that a building or a resource be 50 years old. That's the minimum.
That's why you could include Gambier Circle and golf course and all those other spaces?
Well, we could include Gambier Circle and Damon because they were built in the 40s. So...
Same thing with the golf course behind the pool?
Mhm.
As a source?
Yeah, that was part of the original plan. I mean, it was an open space. It was a park, basically, couldn't be built on because of the grade, and when it's converted to a golf course later, right?
Right, 1958 became a golf course. Fifty-eight, fifty-nine.
Okay, but it essentially preserved a green space.
So, then do the council, where the, as you said, we have the initiative, so collectively the pillars would then decide what the granters would be for their historical site?
Yes, this is a local historic district. It would be designated with a local ordinance by your village council. So, this is a process that is separate from the National Register of Historic Places and the National Historic Landmark. So, it's really up to you in Green Hills.
All right, we have one more question. Pat?
Yes?
Okay. Actually, Gambier Circle was built in 1947 during the government, so that's the significance of the number of Gambier Circles that we offered. We recently passed these out to all the members of Gambier and on Damon Road and to all of the people that live in the originals. My concern, Mrs. Solberg, is that you have been on the payroll for the village since 1900, it's 2000, and 2005. And under your time, we originally started at 676 historic homes. We are now down to near 400 and something. Between you, Mr. Moore, and some of the parties here, we have demolished 27%.
Okay, do you have a question? Ms. Andwan, do you have a question? Excuse me.
If you were involved, do you think that you should be recused from being involved in anything further?
It's pertinent.
Spending your money because you endorse...
Okay, take your seat. Okay. All right, do any other council members have any other questions?
Yes, I do. As far as the next steps that were mentioned in the report, do we have a committee designation to prepare the application?
We'll start that. That would be the next step. We haven't begun that process.
Okay, all right. And then, as far as voting on the boundary map, is that...
Beth, do we have to do that separately, or would we do that as part of the application?
It needs to be part of the application. So, you need to agree on what the boundaries are going to be because it's going to be part of the ordinance designating the district. So, at the time, yeah, at the time when you pass an ordinance, you're going to also pass the boundary map and the guidelines.
All right. Thanks. Wait, do you have another? Do you have a question?
The map on the page 10?
Yes.
Did you say that you took Farragut, Gambier Circle, and Damon out of that one, you know?
Yes, if you compare that one, the map on page 10, to the one on page nine, the blue boundary on page nine is the National Historic Landmark boundary, which includes the veterans' housing that, as Andwan mentioned. But the local district, which is outlined in red on page 10, excludes them, and that is a decision that was made here in Green Hills, not by me.
So, our council decided to name this home a small space, and then the Gambier?
Yeah, that I can't answer.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right, we'll continue to work on it. All right, this is the time for residents, citizens, to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to three minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers.
Okay, Patricia Bender. And what I wanted to know was, if there's a possibility, when you are going over the resolutions, if you could explain them in simple terms as to what you're trying to accomplish? You're using a lot of technical words, and it's kind of difficult to actually follow what you're saying. I found when I went to a board meeting last night, and they were talking about things, that the president really did a great job in explaining it so that we had it in simpler terms as to what you're really trying to say. The other thing is, Chief, I wanted to know if you found out if anyone could sponsor the Cooking with the Cops dinner, to have some better quality foods, if someone could sponsor the food for you? I had talked to you a little bit about that before, so I don't know if you found anything out?
Hamburgers were pretty good.
Well, yes, but, you know, if we could have some, a few other foods other than hamburger and hot dogs, I was just wondering if we could develop a sponsor from the village. So, that's something to, I've only got so many seconds. All right, and then, the other thing is, I was wondering, I kind of looked at your budget, and it was very complicated to me. I really had a hard time understanding it. But what I was wondering was, you allocate so much money to certain things like the Rec Committee. So, if you don't spend that money in the Rec Committee, which I don't know that I could really see it within that budget, does that money stay in there and you add another $35,000 to it the next year, so you have $65,000 for the next year?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we didn't spend anything in 2020, so that means next year we'll have $60,000?
We'll have a pretty good balance.
Something like that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Helen Booker, and I live at 5 Hayden Drive, and I just have a request. The entrance off of Sharon Road where the Green Hill sign is, is it possible? I'm always asking for something. Is it, is it possible to get a street light or some kind of illuminated light put there? There are a lot of people looking for Green Hills, and there are a lot of people, new people, moving into Green Hills, and at night, especially now, that spot is so dark. So, I was just wondering if someone could look into that, check out the costs, see if it's feasible. That's my request today. And the other thing is, the trees at the curb belong to the village, and I was wondering, again, if someone could go around and check, because at my house, the trees are blocking the street light, and it's dark, and that bothers me. So, I just FYI, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Pat Andwan, candidate for council for one of your seats. Passed these out to the village residents, went to every single door, and even the postman that treats Green Hills, saying that you can go to a door from door to door to door, and it's nice home, nice home, disgusting, nice home, disgusting. I think rather than blowing all kinds of money on tax abatements for houses that are way out of reach for most, anyone that's interested in Green Hills, you guys need to refocus on maintaining what you have. The buildings that were built in '38 are solid as rocks. We have Dave Moore, we have Kathy Brokaw, and any of you that played a role, as in Beth Solberg, I was trying to fraud the government into approving properties, and then you turn right around and tear them down after spending $8.5 million of tax money. People are sick of it. Dave Moore, you have no idea how many people want to see you gone, so you might as well start packing. We are sick and tired of paying for your Teslas and for all your antique cars that are stored in our garages, for all of the foolishness that you've put us through, and your little puppets here with their head nodding. You select people only that will let Dave have his way, and the first thing we're going to do is tear down that sign and throw it in your driveway, because your way could be on the way to prison. Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks for your comments, Pat.
My name is Brian Metz. I live on 24 Japodica. I am the husband of Councilwoman Metz. Despite the rumors on Facebook, we are two separate people. Evidence, we're in the same room at the same time for once. My dad was nice enough to watch the little one for us so we could both be here today. My comments tonight are mine and mine alone. I've not reviewed my comments. I've not reviewed my comments with anyone in council. So with that out of the way, you might also know me from candidate Andwan's Facebook page. I believe I'm called a stalker, I'm called a harasser. My mom told me not to say, if you can't say anything nice, don't say anything at all. So my comments about Pat are concluded. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I guess I'll, the evilness in me will continue on with this meeting. All right, reports of village officials, municipal manager Yvonne Kobach.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I would like to just acknowledge Beth in the work that she has done for us every year. It's a long process, but a good and thorough process. And I would imagine we'll take this up at the work session to possibly have legislation at the next council meeting if you are all over with that.
Yes.
Yvonne, can you tilt your, just so that we can see? Sorry. Okay, other than that, I haven't really prepared anything. So if anybody has any questions, okay, questions.
I just have a question. Far enough with what Ms. Helen Booker said, oftentimes I have called in because there are branches that are covering the stop sign, et cetera. So maybe we can have like a scheduled walk or a scheduled revision to put it on the calendar. Because sometimes when, if the person says, I didn't see the stop sign, well, you have the double white lines anyways to let you know. But just in abundance of caution, some of those branches are also protruding as people walk. And some of the, based on also some of the growth, not necessarily branches, but growth on the sidewalk as well. So if we can have that on a schedule to be reviewed every year, then maybe we can attack it right as it happens.
Right, I do just want to say that it's so much of what the service department does is weather driven.
Yes.
And what they think they're going to do, they may not end up doing, but I'm pretty sure they're aware of the situations and will try. We've also been had, having to have tax from COVID, which has slowed things down a little bit, so.
And this is something that the service department does do these years.
Yeah, it was on schedule.
Whatever the weather is bad, well, we just reschedule. There's no problem there.
This year, the tree was excessive.
Yes.
Which is nice. This is the greenest time, I think, in years that I've seen green hills in this period. And, but yes, you know, I, when I walk some, I have to document everything. I know it's on their list.
Yvonne, tagging on to that, just so that the residents know and also so that I know, I wonder, how does that work? If you're responsible for a sidewalk in front of your home, if there's branches that are too low, do they, are they okay to trim those so that it stays clear? Or is that fall totally on the village's?
Well, we'll do the ones on the planting strip, but certainly if they have trees that are hanging over the property, it's so unusual for those.
But the planting strip trees, that should be left to?
Correct.
Okay, just to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. I did think, I do want to mention the Sharon Road area that, I thought the last time, Mr. Lee, I thought you'd gone and put a solar light there or something. Didn't somebody go put a solar?
Yeah, you could have put solar. It's not enough.
Okay.
And then it gets darker earlier, you don't have that solar power.
True.
And you get old, can't hardly see.
I couldn't look into the cost, but costs are going up.
Well, yeah.
Maybe if you get Forest Park to put a brighter light and they have one right across.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, moving on, law director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. No pending legal action over the village at this time, and there's really no state legislative action relative to municipal interest to report on right now. The General Assembly was on their summer recess until September, so now that they're back, we'll continue to watch and see if any new bills are introduced of any municipal interest.
Okay, all right, thank you. Clerk of council Tanya Koller.
Tanya Koller.
Okay. Chief of police Neil Furtman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Bender already mentioned our Cooking With the Cops. That was attended by over 100-plus residents. I like the burgers and the hot dogs, but we'll look into something different. We had a number of our officers that were there as well. And a very special thanks goes to our two grill masters, one of whom is seated to my left, Jack Lee, who did an absolutely admirable job on the grill, worked hard all night long, and we certainly appreciate your efforts, Councilmember Lee. And along with him was former councilmember Kenny Burke, who also stepped up. Between the two of them, the hot dogs and hamburgers flew off of the grill and I think everybody had maybe even seconds. AAA from down in Forest Park was there. They not only sponsored a giveaway, but we also had a resident who stepped up and gave us a $25 restaurant gift certificate, which we also gave away to the attendees. We had lots of prizes for both the adults and the kids. And speaking of kids, they all liked the shaved ice that we had there. That was from a Cincinnati firefighter who came up with that, and even the big kids liked that. So it was, I think, a good evening and we look forward to doing that again, hopefully on National Night Out next year. We are the, recognized by the Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police as the, as Ohio's best agency for the month of September 2021. So we share that certificate that we received in our monthly bulletin and we'll be displaying that downstairs somewhere here in the building. On September 11th, we collaborated with our colleagues at the Green Hills Fire Department. We had a solemn march from our headquarters buildings here and down to the commons. Chief Spath and I both spoke and we recognize the brave heroes from 20 years ago who gave their lives. And we had assistance from the American Legion that was arranged by Councilmember Walther, and they, they played taps at the conclusion of the ceremony. I think one of the things that Green Hills is primed for is community-oriented policing. And we had two little tidbits of information that I wanted to bring to your attention. First, Officer Zach Braun responded to a squad run in our F section to assist an 89-year-old man who had suffered a possible stroke. Officer Braun reported that the patient's wife was distraught and concerned that her husband was going to the hospital alone. So the officer then provided her with courtesy transport to Mercy Fairfield due to the squad being unable to transport any other passengers in the ambulance other than the patient temporarily due to COVID restrictions. And then on that same day, a little bit later, Officer Blake Mayberry and Officer Braun both reported that they played basketball with the kids on Falcon and it got a little dark by the time they concluded. So afterwards, Officer Mayberry gave Cameron a ride to his home in the D section due to it being dark and not wanting him to walk. In terms of crime and criminal statistics during the month of August, we made six criminal arrests, including charges for domestic violence, driving under the influence, drug possession, and failure to appear. We responded to 191 incidents, including 16 squad runs, 14 warrant service calls, 10 places found open, 10 parking complaints, nine domestic trouble runs, eight animal complaints, seven thefts, seven neighborhood complaints, six intrusion alarms, five suspicious persons, and five trouble runs. We provide mutual aid in 14 instances. We issued 49 traffic citations, 61 warnings, and investigated six traffic crashes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any comments, Chief? Questions? Congratulations on the.
Thank you, sir.
Recognition. Great. I lost my place. All right, next, recreation cable TVs, Natasha Metz.
Did you have any? Skipping some people?
Oh, no, no, no.
Number five.
I did lose my place.
You're next.
Next, the mayor. What happens when you get old?
You were just so excited to get to my report.
I know, I wanted to get that. Okay, I have a couple of things. One, Duke Energy has applied to the Public Utilities Commission for a rate increase. That includes the pay electric for houses, businesses, streetlights, and that sort of thing. It'll probably take at least a year or so before the PUCEO makes any kind of a rendering on it, but it's about 40 pages of rates. So that'll be coming. I've got mayor's court receipts for the month of July. Bank balance ending is $19,496.15. And $1,116 goes to the state of Ohio, $39 to Hamilton County, and $5,089 to the village of Green Hills. July, or August, the ending bank balance is $17,181.84. Checks to be issued to the state of Ohio for $1,844. Hamilton County $66, and the village of Green Hills $7,243.90. And that's all I have. Maybe I'll make one comment because somebody mentioned about my antique cars and that sort of thing. Well, my antique car happens to be my father's car, which I didn't pay for, but he did. And leasing is a good way to get vehicles and also managing my money in a manner that I can afford to do that and managing my wife's money, so. So there we go. All right, next, we have safety committee, Melanie Herrmann.
I do not have a report for safety committee. Our next meeting was, is tentatively scheduled for October 26th, but I will check with the chiefs to see if there's any business. I also wanted to do a public service announcement. Poll workers are needed for the election. That would be both Democratic and Republican. You can go to www.votehamiltoncountyohio.gov if you are interested. They are paid positions, so I believe you need to be available both the Monday before the elections and the Tuesday of elections, but please go to www.votehamiltoncountyohio.gov. Thank you.
Great, service and streets.
I had a couple of questions for Melanie.
Okay.
A couple of things. One is, and I think it would fall into your category, it's been really nice, tremendous clear up from the first days of school by us on Faragut Road. But now we're seeing something different where they're coming out of there and they're trying to escape school as fast as they possibly can and for a 20 mile an hour zone. And I know you guys are there often, but I've heard through a resident they're really concerned about the kids that are also leaving there, some of them are on bikes, and the speed is pretty aggressive from what I can tell. So we went from like standing still for 20 minutes before we could, you know, get out of our driveway to lightning quick escape, so just want to bring that to your attention.
And this would be heading, turning right out of the school?
Well, we're only aware of the heading towards Hadley side, but I would imagine if...
That's, I think, the only way they're allowed to go.
That's right.
But apparently sometimes they do a little turnaround at Hadley to go the other way, like illegally turn around at Hadley to go the other way. Not as often as they do the speeding, but.
I was stuck there this afternoon for a while waiting for everybody to come out and they were going both ways. The buses went that way, the buses went this way, cars went both ways. By a person directing.
Was the crossing guard there? Was the crossing guard there?
Crossing guard was there and she was directing them.
Okay.
Both directions.
Because I thought there was.
When I was there, she wasn't letting any of the cars turn left. She was only letting cars turn right and I was waiting for my walker.
Well, possibly when the bus went that way, the car right behind the bus also went that way before.
Before she, okay.
Do anything.
Because that is supposed to, if I'm correct, it is supposed to be, cars are only supposed to go right because you can get to it in both directions.
That's my last understanding, but we'll look into it and we'll also do some enforcement there.
It might also be closer to Gambier when they get out of sight of the school, probably is where they're.
And I've seen.
Punching it.
They've been on.
If you've got a comment.
It's definitely not a case of, it's a.
There is a handful of buses that do actually turn left, but they're minimal, they're the ones that are charged. Well, they're paid according to school district, they turn left and the rest of the path all the way.
The school district had told me they would only have four buses turning left. We asked them to reduce that traffic because the abuse our road is getting. So they said they were going to try to stick with four, so let's be sure they're doing that.
Well, I saw four when I was standing there waiting for my daughter to turn left and that's all.
Okay, that's right.
I mean, it's been an immense improvement from the first couple of days, no doubt. And I know that you guys are there. It's just one of those things to make sure we stay on top of the, you know, especially with students walking home. And then the other thing is, I also heard from another resident that they love Green Hills, they just wish there was a couple more lights on the street. And I know that's not always possible depending where they are, but I think we should keep that in mind. It seems like, it seems like a little bit of craziness out there. They get security by, you know, having the lights there above the cars. So if we have the opportunity, we should, you know, see.
I think that would be Jen, Ozmanoglu with the Streets and Services, but.
I was thinking of the safety side, but.
Either way, yes, it's applicable.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Well, you're lucky you live in an area that has streetlights.
I know.
My part of Greendale has no street.
Actually, it's our front light that lights this portion of the area.
The actual streetlights are maintained by Duke Energy.
Yes, but we pay them.
Okay. But I mean, ours goes out all the time on Alcott, so I, we called Duke to fix it, so that would be the first line of.
Great, it's not about the lights being out, they just, where they.
They want more installed.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of space between them, but I'm sure there's still pockets across the way.
Okay.
And a long, long time ago, I think it ended up even making it on the ballot to have a levy to put in more streetlights and it was defeated.
Because of cost? Because of the cost?
Right. And, and you have to get, you know, those who had the streetlights weren't necessarily interested in paying additional money because they already had the lights. Those who didn't have the lights were interested, but not enough.
Well, the LEDs are probably on way in price.
Okay, now, are you ready?
You haven't done her much.
Okay, do you want to take over?
Natasha can go. You know, what I have is really not that.
It's the first time I've taken a three-week vacation and I've got a recovery.
Lots of notes coming out with recognition. Very much.
Okay, service and streets, Jennifer Ozmanoglu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a meeting on September 15th, the Streets and Services Committee. We went over quite a few things. I'll just touch on a few. The third phase of the sidewalk repair has begun. So that's the sidewalk cutting for the ones that aren't, there's not a huge gap. And the repairs, they are looking at replacing and there will be a calendar out whenever they figure out. It's all comes down to money. So, but there was a bid that was given that was reasonable, so.
They'll be starting any time. They're just, they're kind of working on their own time. As clerkless, they go do a block. Yeah, so we could look for a calendar on that, maybe. Approximate, you know, again, so much of that's weather driven.
Right, and when they're getting cold.
Their own projects, so they're fitting them. It's large in overall scale, but small in terms of they do a block here, a block there, a block there. So they're doing them as they have time to go in and do a block. So that's why timing will be difficult.
Okay. As far as the trees, we did discuss that, the limbs. So I've gone around Green Hills, I went around one time and kind of made a note of everything, and then it was remedied in time. But there's a lot of trees and there's a lot of limbs. So they're, they are working on it. And I have noticed myself that things have been addressed. As far as property upkeep, I've noticed, I have noticed that since code enforcement has been up, that there has been some improvements. It's not perfect, but it's getting there. And I think a lot of the rental properties are getting addressed. I think that their landlords are becoming made more responsible for their properties. So I think that we're going to see better, Bob's really on it. And so he's really making an effort to enforce. And so he's really making an effort to enforce more violations and citations on people. So I think it'll, I have noticed that things have gotten better, and so I think that we'll continue to see improvement, which is nice. Street sweeping was brought up. The street sweeper, they have looked into purchasing a used one, and that's really expensive, too. So it's actually more cost-effective to hire someone to come in and sweep the streets, so that is on the agenda. I think we're holding off a little bit because of the construction, but no, definitely. And I think that would address a lot of the issues such as the drainage areas and stuff like that, too. So that's definitely upcoming.
We've contracted with Springfield Township, I believe, in the past, or no? I thought at one point we hired Springfield Township and used their street. There was Forest Park.
Years ago, we had an agreement with Forest Park, and we did some things for Forest Park, and they came in and swept our streets, but through, through the years, they quit doing that.
Yeah. No, I think that, you know, we'll look into that for sure. And I mean, I think that's, that about wraps it up. The litter, several people have asked me about rumpkey, why, when they pick up trash, how come there's so much trash lying around? Rumpkey drivers are not supposed to pick up trash that falls out of cans, so, because that's, that's not safe for them. So, you know, we all just, again, need to be a little more aware. When I pick up my trash can, if something has fallen out for some reason, I pick it up. So, you know, I just, it's, I think it's getting better. If litter has blown down the street or something like that, that's a different issue. But, you know, I, I think rumpkey, if there's a valid complaint, certainly bring that to, you can call rumpkey and bring that to their attention, or tell us, and we can carry it further. All right, thank you.
Great. Very good. Okay, now we go. Community Development.
Nice, yeah.
Okay, Recreation Cable TV, Natasha Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to say, first off, that the movie nights were a great success for the first year. I would definitely like to see some improvement, and I think we can improve on that by providing, you know, just more for the events. So I'm, I'm going to continue those next year, next summer. So look forward to those because they were great. It was especially good to have them up there on the gazebo. It was great for parking. The restrooms are right there. We could open the concession stand and everything.
You meant Malloy's?
What?
You said great at the gazebo. You meant at the park.
Sorry, picnic shelter.
Yes.
They're the same thing in my head. It's a thing with tables and... Picnic shelter behind Malloy's. Thank you for the clarification. And then, of course, Harvest Fest is coming up on Saturday. It's from four to eight P.M. The band we've got is Moonshine Drive, so come and check them out. When they take a break at six, the Cincinnati Dance is going to come and have a little demonstration. We've got the Chalk the Walk going on, which I will need a couple volunteers from council to pick the council's choice for the best Chalk the Walk. So if you're going to be there, please email or text me and let me know, and you can pick our choice for the Chalk the Walk competition. Food trucks are coming. I know Kona Ice is going to be there at three. A couple other ones are going to show up about four. And then we've got pumpkin decorating, vendors, all the same old such. We are starting to set up about noon, and I did have, one of my volunteers is actually unable to help us as he had a death in the family, so if anybody is willing to come out and help, please let me know. I'm always looking for volunteers, set up or clean up during the event as well. So I know I've asked a couple times in the community, and I don't get much of a response, but I'm asking once more. Come and let me know if you can volunteer even for an hour or two to help us out. But I will be there the whole time. Council members, you guys as well, please let me know if you can come and help or if you'll be in the area. Again, even if it's just an hour of time, I'll take it. And then lastly, we have a meeting next week on October 6th at 3:00 P.M.
And was New Soul Glass involved in this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. But, I mean, it's pretty neat to see their glass blowing truck, the side opens up. They do these great glass pumpkins and stuff, so that alone is worth coming out to Harvest Fest for, I believe.
Okay?
Yeah.
I can help you on Saturday from five to six.
Five to six, perfect. I am marking you down.
I'll be there for setup.
Thank you.
Okay. Community Development, Jeff Halter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last round of beautification awards went out. It's really fun to talk to these people. You can see that there's a true appreciation for those of them that have been really caring for their properties and to be recognized. The next round, and we encourage everyone to nominate somebody, and it can be yourself. We, we will do up to two per side of Wenton Road. But there's a real appreciation for those that have received the awards, and you can tell they take a lot of pride in their, in their homes, and it seems like a very, very good thing to encourage. So October 18th is the deadline for the next round. If you know of a property that's been cared for well and you want to nominate them, please include a photograph at least, and sometimes it's nice when we've seen a before and after to just see the tremendous advancement they've made. That makes a big difference. But also just, it doesn't have to be a lot of words, just a little blurb on why they think, or why you think it's worthy of recognition. And you get a little gift certificate along with that, or a gift card. We're not doing poll, day poll passes at the moment, so, but, but that's been...
Southwest and Eric?
That's been encouraging. And then, just to conclude, some of the other things really fell into other categories that I shared, but our, our meeting, the next Community Development meeting is October 6th at 2:30. And that concludes my report.
Can I answer a question?
If your neighbor...
Can I answer an audit?
I was just going to say, if your neighbor has a, just a spectacular lawn, if you have a spectacular lawn, please, please, please nominate them. There are so many that I drive through the village and I'm like, oh, somebody needs to nominate you. You know, the committee itself, we are not nominating people because we're the ones that are picking, but please nominate people. There are so many beautiful yards in the village that I would love to see come up.
And I also would like to call out those that are at the little gateway entrances that do a fantastic job. They know that their, their first house you come across in Green Hills, and they've been doing it for years. So let's not take them for granted either, and, you know, appreciate the work they've done, and consider nominating them. Thank you.
Okay. Can I answer an audit? Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get, get into this, if I could respond perhaps to Dr. Bender's concerns about when we get into resolutions, we have, we have to read what legally, what, what's, what's in the, in the resolution as far as, in the public record. I do try, at least, I try, try to give a little synopsis at, at the end when it's open for discussion. So, you know, we, we do, do try to do that. We'll be a little more careful about that in, in the future, so. In front of you tonight at your places is the recap for the month of August. Income receipts for the month of August were a little weird looking relative to the previous year, which August 2020 was exceptionally large income. If you remember, that was kind of at the end of the tax period break, and we should see some normalization next, next month. Overall, though, year to year, we're, we're right on target. We had, looks like we got an advance on our, our early deposit on our real estate taxes for 2021. General fund balance is, is looking great. As of the end of August 2021, the general fund balance is one million, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Expenses and budget were, were right on target as far as where we wanted to be, as well as where, what we'd appropriated for this, this point in time. There were no transfers during, during this period.
Any questions or concern? Jack?
Yes.
Can I, or are you finished with your report, or I'll wait till the end? I, I'm sorry.
What?
I just, I wanted to mention that I had gone to the, the exit conference for the Ohio Arbiter of State that bought it for Green Hills for 2009, or 2020 and 2019. And I did attend that with, and I, they went over all the findings and everything like that, and that will be published in a report, and I was so happy to see, and I, that everything looked great. They had done exactly what they were supposed to do, and as far as everything they found, there was, everything was positive. So it was really good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Deb, did you want to have anything else to add?
To, for, oh, for the audit?
Yeah.
No, I mean, that, that's fine. We, we did receive a clean opinion for the financial statements for the nineteen and twenty-two-year term from the Auditor of State. And so we never know when they're going to come in, and all of a sudden I get an email in June, hey, we're coming in, so we have to, you know, make sure we have everything ready and prepared for them. Nice group of folks that did come in, and we all worked well together. It took about a couple, a couple of months to get it finalized. And then two of the head auditors came in for a meeting a few weeks ago, and Jennifer joined us for that discussion along with Yvonne and myself. And so we went over the independent auditor's report, and so we won't see them again for another, you know, another, well, up to twenty-one and twenty-two, so two more years.
All right. You know, in the Intergovernmental Affairs Laws and Rules, Maria Walther.
We don't have at this time anything to discuss, but I'm tentatively putting a date for the committee meeting on October the 26th at 6:00 P.M.
Okay. All right, unfinished business. We have ordinance number 2021-03-LNR. For a second reading, amending section 12101 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding Rule 3 of the Rules of Council. Walther.
I think at this time, there's going to be an amendment proposed.
We have to...
There, if there's going to be an amendment proposed, it would normally be proposed during the council discussion portion after there's a motion to adopt in a second.
Okay. Yes, sir, I have amended the section 12101 for the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding Rule 3 of the Rules of Council, whereas section 208 of the Village Charter provides that the rules of council shall remain in effect until amended, changed, or repealed by majority vote of council, and whereas Rule 39 of the Rules of Council provides that the rules of council may be amended, provided notice of the intended amendment shall have been given on the floor of council as, at the previous regular meeting, and whereas notice of this intended amendments have been given on the floor of council at the previous regular meeting. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, members elected there to concur in section one, that section 12101 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances shall be amended as follows. Section one, that section 12101 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances shall be amended as follows, Rule 3. Order of Business, the Order of Business of Council shall be as follows. One, roll call. Two, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Three, public presentation with prior permission. Four, public hearing if any are scheduled. Five, reports of municipal officials. Six, reports of committees. Seven, opportunity for residents and non-residents to appear before council. Non-residents shall obtain prior permission. Eight, unfinished business. Nine, new business. Ten, council comments. Eleven, municipal calendar. Twelve, executive session if needed, and thirteen, adjournment. Section two, that this ordinance shall be effective from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this ordinance number 202103-LNR.
Second.
Okay, we moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend ordinance number 2021-03-LNR as follows. Under Rules of Business, step number seven and step number 12 to read. And I'll just read the proposed change amendment. Number seven, opportunity for residents, after six, obviously, opportunity for residents and non-residents to make comments solely regarding legislation that is on the current agenda. Non-residents must obtain prior permission. And then, and number 12, opportunity for residents and non-residents to appear before council. Non-residents must obtain prior permission. What this does is split their opportunity to talk about the legislation that's on the table, since it's in the heart of our meeting, and then the opportunity, and I think we talked about additional time for residents on, after the municipal calendar.
Are we under any questions on this?
I think it has to be seconded.
Oh, second.
My second, ma'am.
Okay. Right, and so at this point, there's been a, a motion to amend and a second. There can be discussion, but the discussion at this point should just be related to the amendment that's on the floor from Mr. Halter.
And if you could note one other thing, I neglected to put the step 12 at the top. I just had seven listed there, so it should say Rules of Business, step number seven, and step 12 to read.
I have a question.
Okay.
How are we going to stop or non-stop the discussion when it permeates in other areas as well? How are we to behave? How are we to stop that? What are, what are our recourse?
I think it's the same as it's always been. No matter when it shows up during a conversation, if it's not, you know, out of, out of order, then it would be the same no matter when anybody says it.
Okay, and the timing on the...
Well, we didn't have, we didn't attach timing to the original ordinance, so I did not attach any timing.
The amount of time is, is set by the chair.
Okay.
So that's, that's his problem.
Are you under any questions, Claudia?
No. Okay, so do we want to, do we call for a vote on this motion, or...
Right, so because there's a motion to amend with the second on the floor, if there's no further discussion, you can take a vote on the amendment first, and we'll see what happens.
Clerk, both council members?
Okay, Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Walten?
Aye.
Ms. Osmonoglu?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion to amend passes, and now you already have a motion to adopt in a second. So at this, you can continue council discussion on the main ordinance, or if there's no further discussion, you can vote.
And we have another couple of...
You have to, yes, you'll be taking another vote to adopt the ordinance now as amended.
No further discussion on this? Let's call for a vote.
How is the public supposed to get a notice? Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Osmonoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
And Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ordinance number 2021-03-LNR passes.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Just to be clear, residents, there's no need to get any prior notice. The way this is written is non-residents must obtain prior permission. The way this is written is non-residents must obtain prior permission. That it's, that's just for non-residents.
They call our office.
Yeah, call the office and let us know. Because we're not, you know, directly related to community, but we'll still listen.
Can I just make a comment about this? Do you mind if I make a comment about this?
What's it for you?
Do you mind if I make a comment about what's been done here for changing the order? The reason that this came about is to give people more of an opportunity to communicate with the council. And so, by dividing it, now, we can keep it into legislation and, you know, important matters of business. And then, the important matters of business that don't have to do with current legislation, it's moved to the end. We're giving more time to speak, essentially. We don't know. But it allows for more communication. That's why this came about. So, it's not, it's not meant to stifle anybody. It's meant to, in fact, increase more of a dialogue between the public citizens. Where's your legislation in this? I don't see anything that says legislation.
That's the new business.
That would be in.
That's the agenda.
What number?
Eight is unfinished business. That would be anything held over from the last meeting. Number nine.
Rule three. Nine new businesses?
Nine new business would be any new legislation that's in front of council. So, ordinances typically have to have two readings. So, like last time, that ordinance was read for the first time. So, that was new business last time. And this time, it was considered unfinished business. And then, new business would be the upcoming resolutions. Most of our resolutions are new business because they only take one reading.
And the ordinance will go into effect in thirty days.
Correct.
Okay. All right. New business, resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty dash F, accept the material, material terms of the Ohio subdivision settlement pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and consistent with the terms of the July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one National Op-Op-Settle- opioid settlement agreement. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash twenty F, a resolution to accept the material terms of the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and consistent with the terms of the July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one National Opioid Settlement Agreement. A resolution authorizing the municipal manager to execute the participation agreement for the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement with McKesson Corporation, Cardinal Health, Inc., and AmerisourceBergen Corporation, settling distributors pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding herein also known as M.O.U., regarding the pursuit and use of potential opioid litigation settlement funds and consistent with the material terms of the July twenty-first, twenty-one proposed National Opioid Distributor Settlement Agreement available at HTTPS dot slash slash NationalOpioidSettlement dot com slash. Whereas, the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, herein municipality, is a municipal corporation formed and organized pursuant to the Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio. And whereas, the people of the state of Ohio and its communities have been harmed by malfeasance, non-feasance, I'm sorry, misfeasance, non-feasance, and malfeasance committed by certain entities within the opioid pharmaceutical supply chain. And whereas, the state of Ohio, through its attorney general and certain local governments through their elected representatives and council are separately engaged in litigation seeking to hold opioid pharmaceutical supply chain participants accountable for the damage caused by their misfeasance, non-feasance, and malfeasance. And whereas, the state of Ohio, through its governor and attorney general and its local governments, share a common desire to abate and alleviate the impacts that misfeasance, non-feasance, and malfeasance throughout the state of Ohio. And whereas, the state and its local governments, subject to completing formal documents, effectuating the parties' agreements, have drafted and the Village of Green Hills have adopted and hereby affirms its adoption of One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding, M.O.U., relating to the allocation and use of the proceeds of any potential settlements described. And whereas, the M.O.U. has been collaboratively drafted to maintain all individual claims while allowing the state and local governments to cooperate in exploring all possible means of resolution. And whereas, the village council understands that an additional, additional purpose of the M.O.U. is to create an effective means of distributing any potential settlement funds obtained under the M.O.U. between the state of Ohio and local governments in a manner that means that you, that would promote an effective and meaningful use of the funds in abating the opioid epidemic throughout Ohio, as well as to permit collaboration and explore potential fixuation of earlier resolution of the opioid litigation against opioid pharmaceutical supply chain participants. And whereas, nothing in the M.O.U. binds any party to a specific outcome, but rather, any resolution under the M.O.U. requires acceptance by the state of Ohio and the local, and the local governments. And whereas, a settlement proposal being presented by the state of Ohio and local governments by distributors, AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal, and McKesson collectively, the settling distributors, to resolve governmental entity claims in the state of Ohio using the structure of the One Ohio M.O.U. and consistent with the material terms of the July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one proposed National Opioid Distributor Settlement Agreement. Whereas, Green Hills Village Council wishes to agree to the material terms of the proposed National Opioid Distributor Settlement Agreement with the settling distributors, the proposed settlement. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, that the municipal manager in the Village of Green Hills is authorized to accept the proposed settlement on behalf of the Village of Green Hills pursuant to the terms of the One Ohio M.O.U. Section two, that it is found and determined that all formal actions of council relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in open, open meeting of the council and that the deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were meetings open to the public and compliance, compliance with all legal requirements. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Do you want, do you want to address, address that?
All right. Go ahead. I mean, I can speak to it a little bit. Essentially, it's, I mean, that was a long way of saying that there is, all across the country, in fact, there's litigation among many of the states with these pharmaceutical companies. Some of the pharmaceutical companies have offered a settlement agreement throughout the country to different states. It's been presented to the state of Ohio. One of the terms of that is in order for them to enter into the settlement agreement, they need the, they need a certain percentage of local governments in the state essentially to adopt this, sign off on it, and say you're willing to participate in it. Presuming that they get enough of the local governments to agree to this, then the state of Ohio can proceed with the actual settlement agreement, which is very long, very complicated, but it has a formula in it that essentially describes how the settlement funds will be distributed down through the state to the, to the local governments. And then, also guidelines on how you're allowed to use those funds. It's not, it's not going to come to you and go in the general fund and you can do anything you want with it. It will, there'll be, it's a restricted fund eventually when those funds ever come. So, this is a form resolution that the state provided, that this is what they're asking all the local jurisdictions to consider. And if you don't do it, all it means is the state may not get enough local jurisdictions to participate. And then, it would, the opportunity would go away.
And I believe there was a, there's a timeline with the, in which those municipalities have to respond. Obviously, this is.
Yes, there is. And in fact, the state extended it at least once that I know of to give more opportunities. I think the state forgot that local governments need, you know, sometimes you only have one meeting a month and, you know, by the time you get your agendas set, that initial deadline was, was very difficult for a lot of jurisdictions to meet. That's why we're doing it tonight.
Okay. Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Osmond, a blue?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty dash F passes. Next resolution, number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-one dash F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-one F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfer. Whereas, in the twenty-twenty-one annual appropriations that were adopted on December eighth, twenty-twenty, are to be amended. And whereas, the appropriations must not exceed the total accountable resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code, section fifty-seven oh five, thirty-six, A five. Therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested by the County Budget Commission. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, section one. Since certain actions are needed and the money is appropriated, so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year twenty-twenty-one, the following terms of expenditure are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year twenty-twenty-one. Fund description, general obligation bond retirement, account number thirty-one oh one. Original appropriation was forty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Change is five thousand dollars. The new total is fifty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Section two, that the following transfers of funds be made previously to appropriated monies, none. Section three, that the result, resolution shall take effect and be in full force after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
This will hasten the payment of, of the bonds.
It is, actually, it's, this is one of the funds that receives an allocation from the real estate tax settlement. And along with the funds received in, of course, there are auditor and tree tag fees associated with that. And the more that we received in the allocation, of course, the higher the funds. So, we needed a little additional appropriation for the fee expenses to take us through the end of the year. And what isn't used, of course, we just carry over.
Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ms. Osmond, a blue?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-one dash F passes.
I heard someone asked, where does the money come from? Where does the five thousand come from? Is that?
It was, it's just an arbitrary number. I mean, there's, there's additional funds of.
Where does the money actually come from?
From the general fund.
From the general fund?
Yeah, from the general fund.
Yes.
Unappropriately.
From unappropriated general fund money.
Yes, it's, it's the unappropriated fund balance in, in that fund.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-two dash F, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorized, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Mr. Lee?
Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-two F, resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Whereas, the Village of Green Hills, in accordance with the provisions of the law, has previously adopted a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January twenty-twenty-two. Whereas, the Budget Commission of Hamilton County, Ohio, has certified its action therein to this council, together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessarily, necessary to be levied by this council and what part thereof is without and what part within the ten mil tax limitations. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section one, that the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and its certification be in the same and hereby accepted. Section two, that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said village of the, of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the ten mil limitations as contained in Exhibit A attached heretofore and made part of this resolution. Section three, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Whereas Exhibit A, I can find.
Well, the Exhibit A was, was the additional documentation that was, that was provided in the, in the board packet. It was the letter, the letter from the county auditor and then a breakdown of the mileage for each levy that's currently on, on, on the books. Actually, there was, I think there were a couple, a couple that have expired, they're in there towards the end. So, it's just, we, we agree to what, what the tax levies report and the county has certified them and now we're agreeing with that certification.
And this is something that we have to do every year based upon the auditor's evaluations. Okay. Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Osmond, a blue?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Osmond, a blue?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty-dash twenty-two dash F passes. Next item, municipal calendar.
Saturday, harvest fest, four to eight.
Community development, October sixth, two thirty.
Followed by recreation at three P.M.
October twenty-sixth, laws and rules, six o'clock.
October twenty-sixth, safety, tentatively for five thirty.
I think we have another park talk on October fourteenth, is it? October fourteenth for the next park talk? But that's a Thursday. I'm pulling up my calendar here. Make sure I give you the right date. Yeah, October fourteenth is our next park talk.
Is that what? I'm sorry?
Park talk.
Next park talk.
Oh, okay. And then, we have coming up also, and retrieved.
Oh, that's right. That's on.
I have it marked on the twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Nine through twelve.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Probably right here.
I would imagine.
What day is that? October twenty-third?
October twenty-third.
Correct. Okay. Hearing nothing else, meeting adjourned.